Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. as close to it as possible. We can also be viewed live from home on your cable station, Channel 35, seen via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. There are night members present. We need 10 for a quorum. But this being Friday, it is customary for us to begin with a formal council presentations and resolutions, so we can begin that before we formally open the council meeting. Mr. Ridley Thomas, are you ready with your first presentation? Mr. Ridley Thomas is doing an interview.
Members of the council, as you've probably noticed by now, every now and again I'll try to bring in people from my district that I like to refer to as neighborhood heroes. You recall last week I brought in some of my constituents from Washington who helped to capture a criminal. They were certainly heroes. Well, today, I want you all to meet a different kind of heroine. I like to call her a day-to-day hero. Her name is Loretta Goldsmith. She has been a resident of Highland Park for 61 years. And to tell you the truth, I have been trying to bring her into council since the day I got elected. It's truly honored that she has finally joined us. I wanted to tell you how I came to know Ms. Goldsmith. In my years working in Highland Park, there were times when you're out there as the sun is rising, early morning hours, and I would see Ms. Goldsmith sweeping the streets. She'd be sweeping the streets along Avenue 56, 755 on Figueroa. During the campaign, I would watch her as we would get there very early. Finally, one day, I asked her, "Ms. Goldsmith, I don't know where this is, how are you doing?" And I asked, "Why are you doing this?" She goes, "We should all be doing this. The streets are filthy. We should be cleaning our neighborhoods. This is something that we should have everywhere. I've been doing this for years. All I want to do is my part." And she kept on sweeping. And she's been sweeping for many years. In our district, we pick up tons and tons of trash and bulky items. And I'm sure that in each one of our districts, we have a Loretta Goldsmith. And this is what's going to make our city the city that it can be. So I thought it was important to recognize her for her work and for her presence and for the inspiration she gives to many of the individuals along Figueroa and Highland Park. And I'm hoping those individuals who are listening throughout our cable that we need to do this. We need to keep our streets cleaner, and we need to be inspired by Ms. Loretta Goldsmith. For this, I would like to give her the certificate of appreciation. Ms. Goldsmith?
I want to thank you for this hour. I am happy at what I'm doing for my community of Highland Park. You see, I have a strategic idea of how to do this in Highland Park and how to think money-saving. The last 10 or 12 years I did not like, but I saw in Highland Park after I retired from the father. So, again, I would like to thank you all. A warm hug.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. We have 10 members right now. I know you have one additional presentation.
Just one more. Now, let's make this quick.
No, no, no. What we're going to do is we're going to get the meeting started, and then we'll resume presentations in a few minutes.
Thank you, Councilman.
Okay. I believe we have 10 members present. Mr. Clerk, please call the rolls.
Sir, it's Galandra Garcetti, Han Holden, Ms. Casia, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Ridley Thomas, Weiss, Signum, Padilla. 10 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. I would ask that everybody please stand and ask one of our special guests today, Ms. Monica Lozano, to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you for this honor, Mr. President. I'd like to start with a pledge of allegiance. Everybody, please begin. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much. Members and members of the public who have joined us today, we have a very brief council agenda. What we will do is fly, if we can, through that agenda and resume presentations in just a couple of minutes. Mr. Clerk, first order of business, please.
Approve of the minutes.
Mr. Reyes moves. Mr. Zine seconds. Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Han moves. And Mr. Garcetti seconds.
Before starting the regular agenda, there's a few items to be continued. Item number one, a request from Council District 12 and the applicant to continue that matter until October 24th.
Without objection, item one shall be continued.
Item number eight, a request from Council District 7 to continue that matter one week until October 26th.
Also without objection.
And item number 10, a request from Council District 6 to continue that matter until November 20th.
Item number six?
Excuse me, item number 10.
Item number 10?
Yes.
Without objection, that is continued. 11, please. Four weeks if we can continue that.
Mr. Garcetti requests to continue as an item 11.
Four weeks would be November 20th. Without objection.
On the regular agenda, it's appointment of commissioners. Item number two is appointment of Christopher Hammond to the Board of Recreation and Parks Commission.
Is this the only Recreation and Parks Commission before us today?
It is the only Recreation and Parks Commission.
Then if we can have Mr. Hammond, please come forward. I believe public hearing has been held on this item in committee. Is Mr. Hammond here? Seat shouldn't be too hot. Public hearing has been held on this item. Men and women to speak.
Chair recognizes the chair of Arts, Health, and Humanities, Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, Mr. Hammond. You're going to be a real credit to this commission, and we're very pleased that you're going to serve the city. You have a background in doing the sort of things we need to do more of in the Recreation and Parks area, which is make it work in the inner city, find creative ways to leverage public and private assets to get good things done. Do you want to comment for a minute on your vision for how we can try to bring more parks, more recreation facilities, more pocket parks to the inner city based on your experiences?
As you know, council member, I'm involved in affordable housing and urban development. We are very, very interested in seeing more urban parks take place, particularly in the context of other development. We're interested in leveraging dollars both on the housing side and both on the economic development side as well, and trying to find some creative ways that we can't get more open space to our community.
Well, thank you. We pass this out of committee, and we encourage our colleagues to vote for the approval of the nomination, Mr. Hammond.
I look forward to serving. Mr. Ridley Thomas?
Mr. President, members of the contra rise to support the committee's recommendation confirming the nomination of Chris Hammond to the Board of Commissioners of the Recreation and Parks Department. The unique credentials and qualifications that he brings to bear does no more than enhance the potential for us to fulfill our overall objectives to make open space, to make parks, that is to say, green space, an integral part of the communities in which we live and those that we serve. His unique background in terms of familiarity with various parts of the city, knowing the area, North University Park, where his offices are, and the USC Exposition Park complex and the North Adams and West Adams area, as well as his own residential environment north of that particular part of the city in the Los Feliceres makes it an opportunity for us to have in our midst, on that board, an individual who knows the varying parts of the city and can work creatively and constructively to reconcile any existing disparities and harmonize those things that we wish to see happen in a wonderful way for the children as well as the seniors in our cities. So, Mr. Hammond is well followed by uniquely positioned, and I rise simply to support his confirmation this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley Thomas. Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Council President. I just want to say, Mr. Hammond, that I look forward to the day when we can get structures, we can build three to four levels with parks on top, provide sanctuary for our youth and our seniors. And I'm glad you're on board, and hopefully you can help lead the charge to be more creative with the airspace in those neighborhoods where frankly, we don't have any more land.
I look forward to that, Councilman. Ms. Perry?
I have knowledge of Mr. Hammond's background, and I'm very impressed with it, and I wanted to know a little bit about your thoughts of constructing nature parks and wetlands and alternative types of parks in areas that had not previously had that type of recreational
I actually had mentioned to council member Garcetti that I actually have lived in Elysian Valley for a number of years, immediately adjacent to the LA River. And our family in particular was very involved in trying to create some of the pocket parks and also trying to turn the LA River into more of a park-like setting. And I'm a frequent user of the park as well. I should mention I have five children, and I think that I was appointed primarily because we probably are over-users of the park.
I look forward to your working with my office and making sure that all the parks in Los Angeles and the nine council districts get prepared and brought up to speed.
Mr. Garcetti?
Mr. President, I will try to keep things brief because I know we have a full agenda. I rise in strong support of this nomination. I was wondering, Mr. Hammond, if you might just share a little bit the question that I asked of you in committee. I think it will be of interest to council member Han in particular about joint use and what vision you have in terms of being able to couple parks together with schools and some other facilities.
I had mentioned that there are actually some school facilities that really don't own their football fields, their baseball fields. And given the fact that the schools have been able to leverage the parks and recreation system, then I'm certainly interested in trying to explore how it is that we in the parks and recreation system can similarly leverage the school system. So that's something that particularly interests me. And as somebody who's a developer in South Los Angeles, I'm particularly interested in how some of those relationships have taken place in the past and how we can expand on it.
Mr. Holden?
Sure you want this job?
Yes, sir.
You understand what we need to do in the inner city regarding parks, et cetera? I mean, you can build things, can you build parks for us and help us?
I hope to help. There appears to be a pretty large capital.
Very, very difficult to acquire the space. What happens is you need some space, and some neighborhood committee say, "Well, no, we don't want that park there because it's going to bring in undesirables." And I've known that the closed park's done. How are you going to react to that? Some council members think it's, "You've got to go with the community in that case." Then what do you think about that?
Well, I am somebody who's pretty experienced in the community process, and I think that, like everything, there is a whole balancing act between local interest and--
You've got a lot to learn as a new breed, and I got to tell you that when the community say, "We don't want to give up that space for a park because they're bringing undesirables," and the best way to protect our neighborhood is we don't want that park in our neighborhood. Now, you tell me if you have not heard that before, and you have, haven't you?
I have.
All right. Then how do you think that we should respond? To the community or provide the parks where they're needed?
I think I'm going to make a beeline for your office to get some advice.
All right.
Good answer. Any other members wishing to speak? Seeing none? Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Congratulations, Mr. Hammond. Next item, please. My numbers, three, four, and five are the mayor's appointments to the Board of Public Works, Mr. Ronald Lowe, Adriana Rubo Calva, and Janice Wood. And we welcome the three nominees as a group, nominees for the Board of Public Works. Public hearing has been held in committee. Members wishing to speak, Ms. Perry.
Is the mic on? Okay. We have three highly qualified appointees here today, Mr. Lowe, Ms. Rubo Calva, and Ms. Woods. And each one has their own respective expertise in communications and community organizing and, as a lawyer, knowledge of infrastructure, and I have given them my wholehearted recommendation. Perhaps each one of them could take a couple of minutes and just talk about their vision of how they would like to implement their vision as public works commissioners on behalf of all of our council districts. Mr. Lowe, why don't you go first?
Yes, Councilwoman Perry. As I indicated to the subcommittee, I've spent the last five, six years with the redevelopment agency, and I see it's absolutely critical for those depressed areas that the infrastructure and those services which are vital to the citizens of the city are done in a fashion which help promote redevelopment and revitalization to those areas to be sure that we can provide the kinds of services that will enable them to redevelop those areas in a way that will help revitalize them, bring people and businesses there to help also, you know, help the city thrive much better.
Thank you, Councilwoman Perry. I talked to Councilwoman Perry during the committee meeting about three issues that I would like to focus on. One, constituent services, continuing to bring constituent services to the district and the residents. Two, educating, continuing to educate the public on the public work services that we have here in the city. And three, focusing on the bulky items, trash issues that we have in the city.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilwoman Perry and President Padilla and council members. My goals as a public works commissioner are, first of all, to work on coordinating what public works does with the other city departments. I think there is room for better coordination and that we could work together more effectively and efficiently. Secondly, like Commissioner nominee Rubo Calva, I want to work in the community and make sure that people understand what services the city provides and how they can access those services and the value of the services that we provide and how they improve their lives. And finally, I have a special interest in working with Councilwoman Perry through her committee and with all of you on discussing and determining the best use of our public rights of way.
Well, I hope that you'll share my viewpoint and give them your wholehearted support and vote unanimously to support their nominations today.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Mr. Garcetti?
Mr. President, and I'm too very excited to be working with all the public works commissioners when things go through smoothly, as I'm sure they will today. Two questions, though. One, in light of some of the recent job losses that we've had in Los Angeles, what do you think we can do in terms of moving forward some public work, some of the public works that are scheduled in order to deal with some of the job displacement that's occurred? That'd be the first question. Then, secondly, public works really has an impact on the urban environment that we have. And in the past years, there's been a lot of work within Public Work Commission to make sure that such projects are done, not only in an environmentally sensitive way, but in ways that actually help the urban environment. And if you had any thoughts on how we can go forward with that as well? Thank you.
With respect to the projects, I know that one of my responsibilities will be the Santa Monica Boulevard Parkway, which is a project which is now beginning underway. There will be a tremendous number of opportunities in terms of the contracts that public works will be awarding to get that piece of infrastructure done. I know there are several other projects which are on the drawing board. I know there are some projects with respect to Proposition F, so there are going to be some renovations of both libraries, some firehouses, and some, I believe, some recreation areas also. I believe some of those projects are going to begin to go out to bid the beginning of January. And so there, I believe, may be about $250 billion worth of projects which are in the pipeline beginning next year. So certainly, we will make every effort to get those things done, started on time, so that those contracts which come or stem from the result of those things, you know, will be able to get out to the community so that people, subcontractors, and prime suppliers will be able to submit bids and employ people, get people on those jobs right away.
And addressing your second question, we currently have, what I've seen from my experience in CD14, is a Neighborhood Matching Grant, which is something that has worked very well in the urban areas of CD14. Bringing new additional programs like that that bring out the residents to work in partnership with public works is something that we can continue to work with for an urban environment.
I'd like to respond to your first question, which is relative to job loss. And I think that one of the things public works can do is to employ some of the best practices of business and to offer opportunities for retraining and ways that people can continue to work for our city, doing things that are of value and that we can afford to pay them for.
Especially with the job displacement. If that's an area that we could look, and I'm sure Councilmember Perry would be interested in this, I know we're beginning to look at it, the Economic Development Committee speeding some of these along, not just meeting their deadlines, might be a way of dealing with some of that job displacement. So I look forward to working with you on this.
Mr. Microphone, thank you. Mr. President, colleagues, I just have one concern. Your department really establishes the quality of life for the people of our city. The folks in the San Fernando Valley aren't real happy with the quality of life, and I would urge you to break the paradigm and be a little more proactive with the personnel driving down the streets, the couches, the TV sets, the beds. It seems that public works won't go out unless they're called, and I would encourage you as commissioners to change the direction, to make it responsive, send them out when it's there, pick it up, to haul it away. And also, with neighborhood councils, I would urge you with the neighborhood council formation to work with that because it all falls back on the quality of life, and that's what we're trying to do, is enhance that quality of life. But your department really has an integral part in that, in establishing a clean environment, a clean quality of life, and the other areas that have been discussed are critically important. But I want to keep the valley whole. I want to keep them a happy constituency, and your department, with your leadership, will bring that about. So just a direction, I hope you can take that and work with that. Thank you.
Ms. Han?
Thank you, Mr. President. I too am very supportive of the nominees before today. You all bring a very unique background to this. I think it's all about sidewalks and trees, trees and sidewalks. I would say that 90% of the calls that come into my office, 90% of the homeowner meetings I go to, 90% of the times people stop me in the grocery store, it's about-- I go to, 90% of the times people stop me in the grocery store, it's about the sidewalks in the city and the damage that the trees have done and the feeling that homeowners are feeling like they're getting no support from our public works department. They've been told that it's their responsibility. A lot of these people will never be able on their own to pay to remove a, a dead tree or to repair a sidewalk. I think it's the single most important thing we can do in the coming years to keep the city together and to make taxpayers happy is to really address the infrastructure in the city, particularly the sidewalks, and what to do with these ill-thought-out trees that were planted many years ago and have destroyed people's sidewalks, their sewers, their, their foundations. I see people in the audience nodding their heads. So I would like for you to briefly think about or, or express maybe some strategy that we can have in terms of overall fixing sidewalks and taking care of this tree issue in, in the city. Each of you.
Janice Han, I would say, first of all, this being very much a transitional period, I, I think at least it was in my mind to be on my agenda that, you know, certainly one of the first things I had to do, it was a learning curve. And I have to educate myself as well as my co-commissions who have to educate. So and one of the things we need to do is get down there and say, we know there is this problem. So perhaps we need to first evaluate and look at how the current state of affairs, the process and the mechanism is working, and try to either tweak it or come up with some solutions or creative alternatives to perhaps maximize services. Because I certainly, as an individual, recognize that the public works department is not only the vital blood for the city in terms of the services it provides, but it also is the basic fundamental services, the needs of its citizens. And certainly, at any one time, if those services are interrupted or they, they, they don't work, certainly those people who we have a moral and elected responsibility to take care of have to address those issues. So certainly, the first step is to really take a close, hard look at the current situation.
Councilwoman Han, I, coming from Councilmember Pacheco's office, I have been on the other end, accepting and listening to many of the residents and constituents of CD-14 express the same concerns that you have expressed. So I concur with Ron in terms of wanting to come into public works, evaluate and listen to what are our options with the trees, with the sidewalks, and all the complaints we've heard over, that I have heard over the last two years.
Good morning, Councilwoman. To a great degree, I, I agree with you. That certainly is a big issue in my neighborhood. I've been reading about other cities who use different kinds of sidewalks, sidewalks that bend to accommodate root growth and so on. And I'd like for us to do some more investigation of those possibilities. I, I think that we should also, as a city, determine whether it would ultimately be less expensive to remove a tree, to replant a more appropriate tree than to pay for new sewers, sidewalks, and, and those things that you've talked about. And personally, I think my strategy would be to begin by talking to the people who actually repair our streets and sidewalks and who handle trimming of trees. Because my belief is, they know a lot about what we should be doing, and we should be asking them.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Councilperson. I know we're in a hurry, but I thought it was important to share with you that I'd love to challenge you on trying to look at this process from a very different perspective. One that mimics what our country has done during severe economic times, during these hardships. We have a great opportunity to leverage our public funds, our bureau resources, and engage the nonprofit sector, engage the unions, and support those social and job training programs that can recruit young people, construction workers that are out of work, utilize the skills of farm, foreman, foreperson, whatever, people that supervise work programs, and bring them to work to improve our sidewalks, improve our curves, work on our trees, and in the process, they learn a skill, in the process, they learn about how to trim trees, and learn how to beautify the program. More importantly, we engage our young people, give them an option instead of entering into the gang culture and everything else that goes on when you have idle time. So I would like to suggest to you that we break this mold in how we look at how we repair sidewalks, stay within the confines of public safety regulations, but be more creative in bringing in the nonprofits, the young people, and develop these partnerships with the unions as well. You have a great opportunity. And it's been done before. Both World War II, you know, all the work, public work programs. Why not? My understanding is we have a $70 million challenge, 15 years before we can start addressing this problem in a, in a comprehensive way. We can cut that down, and we can leverage our resources. I'm sure state funds are out there, federal monies are out there. We can leverage and get to a multiplicity of goals. So I appreciate if you would consider that and look at that very seriously. Because I know I'll be putting in motions, and I will try to achieve that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Holden. Oh, I'm, I like your answers, but that's not going to fix the sidewalks and trim the trees. Ms. Han asked you about trimming trees and fixing sidewalks, and that's fine. But then potholes need to be done, too. I remember one guy saying that if you find a pothole in my district, I'll give you a dollar. And his name was Han. You couldn't find one pothole there, although I'd make a few and get $100 when I needed it. But let me tell you this, you were saying, you're being really idealistic, and that's okay. Because when you come back for reconfirmation, the sidewalks have not been done, trees have not been cut or trimmed, they're uprooting the sidewalks. I'm not going to hold it against you. Because then you understand what your job is, and you're doing it, but you can't get it all done. And I want to give you an example of what I mean by that. Richard Alatorre put a measure in the ballot, a bond measure, that's going to cost about $700 million to repair all the sidewalks in the city of Los Angeles. And it would take us about 20 years to do it, using $5 billion bond seller, billion bond sales and so on. And those people who were applauding you, saying, get it done, voted no. They voted against the bond measure. So your job is definitely hard, trying to get money from the general fund, which is not there now because of the other crisis that we have to pay for. The public needs to understand, when the money isn't there, the service cannot be provided. They cannot hold your feet to the fire for that. You will intend it? You'd like to be able to do what needs to be done in this city? We all do. But we have to work together with the public as well, and they must understand that and never forget it. We care about them sometimes more than they care about themselves because they won't vote for these measures when they put before them. But I can tell you that we have a program where some money is not being provided for sidewalk repair and removing tree, tree, tree roots. I understand, but it doesn't come near to that $700 million, okay? So I would say to you that, I'm going to ask Ms. Rubalcava, are you coming from the, from the 14th District?
Correct.
Pacheco's District?
Yes.
Wait a minute, no, not my time, Ms. Pacheco.
You forgot who I was?
No, 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 I didn't. I just numbered the district. I didn't want to mention your name. You know, because then if I say 10 or 12 or 14, the public won't know, but now they know who you are. You're coming from his district, right?
Yes, Councilwoman.
And you work for him, right?
Yes, Councilwoman.
Now, the question is, I just want you to be fair.
Yes.
You gotta do, work for all the other 14 districts as well.
Of course.
Would you do that?
Yes.
Okay, fine. Ms. Wood? Now, you have a street name after you, right?
No, but my husband does.
All right, but it's got, it's called--
I, I can't claim that honor.
Ninth street says Wood, right?
It does.
Now, but there are a lot of other streets in this city.
Absolutely.
You gonna take care of those streets?
Absolutely.
Okay, very good. Mr.--
Yeah, Councilman Holden, as, you know, when we met in your office the other day, we were just--
I read the riot act of you, and you were okay.
But, you know, as I mentioned to you then, I was currently, you know, under consideration for an application to the bench. And one of the qualifications, which I feel very proud about in that analysis and evaluation of my background, was the fact that, you know, as a lawyer, you know, I have the ability and a commitment to balance the equities. And that means trying to look at everything and everybody and trying to bring all that together and make it happen. I know there are times where you cannot solve--
Mr. Lowe, my time is running out. I'm the judge today. And let me just say this to you, I'm the judge for you. But I made some calls on your behalf. They said you'd rather have this job, I was told. And you told the governor's appointment secretary--
That's correct.
That you'd rather have this job than be appointed to the bench.
That's correct. That's correct.
And I was about to make that happen for you.
Thank you. But I love this city and I love this job.
Now, you, the call came back, and he says, well, he didn't even want it, he wanted this job.
That's correct.
All right, anyway, closing, Mr. President. I just want to say that you're going to vote on a lot of contracts. We are very strong in terms of affirmative action to make sure that all those contracts will require, if not mandate, that the whole community, citywide, jobs, which are necessary, are participating in those contract, public work projects. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Holden. Seeing no further members wishing to speak, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Congratulations, you are all now confirmed.
Thank you very much.
Let's get to work. Next item, please. Next items are items six, seven, and nine are items for which public hearings have been held. Items six, seven, and nine, public hearings have been held. Members wishing to speak? Items six, seven, and nine, seeing none? Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those items are approved. Next item, please. Items numbers 11 through 17, with the exception of number 11, so it would be 12 through 17, are currently before you. There are items for which public hearings have not been held. I understand there is a verbal amendment for item number 13 from Mr. Ridley Thomas. Okay, items 12. And item number 14 has an amended motion that was circulated. Items 12 through 17, public hearing has not been held, but it did not have requests from members of the public to speak on those items. We shall deem public hearing open and closed. Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Just a technical correction. The room number should be 1060, Mr. Member of the Council on item number 13, as it relates to ITGS, where it will meet.
Okay. Without objection, item 13 is amended.
Thank you.
And a technical correction being circulated on item 14. That is correct. So without objection, we'll adopt that as well. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on items 12 through 17, including 13 and 14 as amended. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please. Item number 18 is closed session. I do wish to hold that on the desk. Let's hold that on the desk. And also on the desk for the special meeting, let's call the roll in the special meeting. Hertz and Glanter, Garcetti, Han, Holden, Ms. Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Ridley Thomas, Weiss, Zine, and Padilla, ten members present, and a Corn, Mr.-- This is a special meeting. We have one agenda item in a special meeting. Mr. Clerk, shall we take this matter in open or closed session? There are two reports on one file. There is a budget and finance report and a joint ITGS and personnel report. A motion is required to adopt one or the other. You may recess closed session if you so care to. Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Mr. President, members of the council, I rise to move item B on the report. And I do believe that we can conduct the business at hand in open session and would request that the respective general managers come forward to give the presentation on the item, as well as the city administrative officer who participated in the CLA. So if they would come forward, I think we can proceed.
Okay, we are considering agenda item number one of the special meeting. As the general managers come forward, public hearing has been held on this in committee. We will entertain a brief staff presentation and then proceed to vote on the motion by Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Let me just simply say, for clarification for the members, Mr. President, that this item is the item that the council approved last week. And we directed staff to return with funding. That is what is before you in one B. This is the first step to securing the civic center and the people who work here, some 7,000 employees and people who have business here, thousands others who do what they need to do in terms of coming for city services. Be mindful of city departments here, planning is here, others are located in the civic center. Now, other actions are pending, and we'll come forward pursuant to the recommendations that were heard today from threat preparedness task force that has been convened. But the security system that is needed in this particular time is of critical importance. I turn now to the staff for further details.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Ed Rose. I'm with the Office of the City Administrative Officer. And the reports before you outline a proposal submitted by the Department General Services for additional staffing and, and resources for the civic center area buildings and grounds. The proposal as submitted by the department is consistent with the recommendations adopted in the Security Needs Assessment Plan from 1997. It should be noted that this proposal as submitted is for basic access control for the civic center buildings and grounds, including City Hall, City Hall East, City Hall South, and the LA Mall. Specific program elements of this proposal, excuse me, include the addition of 40 security and staff support positions directly to the Department of General Services at a cost of $1.1 million. Secondly, it provides for the design, acquisition, and installation of an integrated security system for City Hall, City Hall East, and City Hall South and the LA Mall at a direct cost of $1.5 million. And lastly, it provides additional funding to relocate the operational headquarters for the Security Services Division of the Department General Services from Room P190 in City Hall East to the ground, the first floor, rather, of City Hall South. We have also been tasked with identifying a potential source of funds for this proposal. Such, we have identified a total of $2.7 million, 2.3 of which is not from the, from the general fund. It is provided through uncommitted, balances of uncommitted MICLa funding that was designated to the Department General Services for various construction projects and equipment purchases. This will be available, and we are recommending that this amount be provided to fully fund the integrated security system for the City Hall buildings in addition to the relocation and buildout for the operational headquarters of the Security Services Division. In addition, the Department General Services has identified approximately $400,000 in salary savings, which we recommend be applied to partially offset the cost of the 40 new positions. We do have, as a note, technical change in the reports. For both reports, item three, technical language change, we would recommend changing the word from appropriate to expend. It should be expend directly from the following MICLa bond issues to general services for the purposes stated in this report. That concludes my presentation. We are available to answer any questions you may have at this point.
On the balance of my time, Mr. President, Mr. McCree, General Services here, the fire chief is here, Commander Leep is here, all of whom are prepared to address the issue to underscore the critical nature of implementation of the entirety of this package that is before you. Mr. McCree?
Yes, sir. John McCree, General Manager, Department General Services. I had the privilege of addressing you the other day in closed session. I still want to make myself available to any member of your staff or yourselves who want to talk about security. However, I just want to make everyone aware, this security package we're bringing has been developed over time. This is not something we threw together on September 11. We started planning for the opening, reopening of this building over a year ago. We've had numerous budget requests go to committee and council. Each one of them have been met with some degree of skepticism and a lot of questions. We're bringing back a plan that we feel right now addresses the need for more personnel and begins putting in the technology, infrastructure, so that we can add on. This is a package to prevent, protect the entire civic center. I'd just like it to be looked at in that context.
Chief, Commander Leep.
I think the important part is, what's changed a little bit is to separate the two systems would be a mistake. What's going on now are things that are not traditionally fire-related or only security-related. You're having types of potential incidents that become a fire incident that we need to respond to, but is also a security issue. And I think we all can reflect on the Anthrax situation as a perfect example. That's not going to manifest itself as a fire incident initially, but will have impact, and it's more of a security. So the two systems need to be integrated so that we can benefit from the interaction of the alarm systems with the security cameras and, and the security that's around the building.
Commander Leep.
Yes, the, the events of September 11 merely underscored the need for this equipment to--
to, as has been pointed out, there have been task forces looking at this for several years. I know the Emergency Operations Board gave a mandate to the Emergency Management Committee in October of last year to look at the same issue. So these are all recommendations that all of those task forces have separately come to the same conclusion that are needed, and it's something that the Police Department supports and the Emergency Operations Board as well supports.
Mr. President, you've heard from the working men and women of the city at the most senior level of staff in our respective departments, public safety. It is about acting with dispatch now. Prudence prevails. A lot of due diligence has been done. We are clearly in a mode to help enhance public safety, to save lives. We have to do both parts of this. Deploy personnel and upgrade the technology if we expect to be in a position to secure this environment, to cause the 7,000 employees to feel some heightened level of comfort here, as well as those who come to do business in the civic center. I strongly urge pursuant to the letter that I've written you, your unanimous support of one B. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley Thomas. Mr. Weiss?
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to commend the Chair of the Committee, Mr. Ridley Thomas, for his efforts over a long period of time in crafting this proposal, and I know how hard the staff and the representatives of the security agencies have worked on this. And I think my concern, as I expressed it earlier this week in closed session and as I expressed it in Budget and Finance Committee, is not with the substance of what is before us today, but the concern that Councilman Garcetti, Councilman Pacheco, and I discussed at Budget and Finance is one of phasing and one of needs. In terms of needs, our concern was, what are the most urgent needs right now that we can address right now? And the answer that we got at Budget and Finance Committee principally related to staffing and personnel issues. And what I would like to hear you address, gentlemen, you're all gentlemen, is, is that in fact accurate in terms of, for the time being, the next several weeks, several months, are there certain needs which we could address by way of personnel and then defer consideration of the global package for sometime not so far in the future? I know it's something you want, but I'm concerned that we have a whole variety of new needs that we need to assess throughout the city, from agencies throughout the city. In fact, all city agencies have just participated in a project being coordinated by the CAO. They're all presenting their new needs for security in light of September 11th. I think it might be prudent, and I'd love to hear your comment on this, to address all of those at once and address this request as well, and then prioritize later.
Tony DeCle, General Services Department. Budget and Finance Committee indicated that they'd like to know what the priority levels were, and the staffing is the first priority level. The second priority level would be phase one of the SNAP, the electronic system, which would be the finishing of City Hall, and then phase two, which would be the finishing of City Hall East. The Finance Committee indicated that they would approve that first level, but indicated some resistance to phase one and phase two, which is finishing City Hall electronic system and completely installing a electronic security system in City Hall East. In terms of what's needed, we do need the electronic security system in the civic center buildings and actually in a number of other buildings. Certainly, in this instance, we're probably one of the few buildings in the downtown civic center area that has no electronic security systems to speak of on the exterior of the building. What this system will do, it will provide a secure environment that includes the building envelope, in other words, the exterior of the building, and it'll address several of the key elements of the key high-risk areas internal to these buildings. It's a starter system. It's not the end, but it's something that we need to move forward with. It was developed in conjunction with the Fire Department, Police Department, by a consultant, a highly regarded consultant in this business, who's done a lot of work in the civic center areas, and it was addressed to be something that's modular, that we can implement now, and if the need arises for improvements or additions, we can put those additions on in a modular space. This is the backbone. This is the starting point.
Mr. Pacheco?
Mr. President, colleagues, I understand that the council voted to approve this last week, but the other prudent thing that was done last week is it was sent to committee to see if we can afford this. And my concern is that we're going to take one step forward to take care of ourselves here at City Hall, and we're going to run out of money to take care of the public, and I don't want that to happen. I want to make sure that when we do this, that we take a global view of what the needs are, and that we make sure that if we're going to spend money on equipment, that we look at the other areas that are necessary, the hazmat issues, the bioterrorism issues that are surfacing now that don't predate this report and the work that's being done for City Hall. That's my concern. So at this point, I would like to move as a substitute motion the Budget and Finance Committee report and let them have some relief for the tired security officers that have been working very long hours, have been doing a commendable job during those long shifts. But at this point, to spend money on equipment without having a global view in terms of what the public needs are and the greater public needs are, we're talking about the millions of people that live in the city of Los Angeles, I think it wouldn't be prudent. So I would pass that. We adopt the Budget and Finance Committee, allow Mr. Weiss and Task Force and the departments to look at this more globally, allow Budget and Finance and the CAO and CLA to look at MICLA and other line items, potential line items, to fund some of our needs that the general public is looking forward to have in terms of their safety. And that's my concern at this juncture. So I would simply move as a substitute the Budget and Finance Report, which gives them some fresh bodies so they can really take care of those needs, and then we can look at this more globally.
Ms. Perry?
Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. I too want to praise the work that General Services has done. I think that it's exemplary, not only because you've put together a plan, but you've also scraped within your own barrel to find the dollars, which is something that's very difficult to do sometimes. You've been able to look for places to fill this need first within your department and then looked for funds outside of that as well. I do rise, though, because I think that it's important for us to look at the public perception of this. We have 3.6 million people in our city that need protection. We have 7,000 plus here, plus the visitors, as Councilmember Ridley Thomas mentioned. And I think it is very important on us to make sure we take care of those employees that are here, and that's why I offered this compromise in the Budget and Finance Committee, to make sure that we have those security guards that are here every single day and those officers that are here every single day to have some time off. Right now, they are working protecting a public building strongly every single day without space sometimes, lockers for them to put their items in. That piece is critical. But I also think that what Councilmember Weiss has done in saying that we need to look at citywide at making sure that we secure the city for 3.6 million people, that that too must go hand in hand. And it's not just a perception issue. It isn't an either or. I told Councilmember Ridley Thomas this. It isn't either or. It's not that we can only do one or the other, but we know how budgeting does occur sometimes. We know that MICLA funds are our city's credit card, and they're either going to go one place or another, and if they're going to be for capital improvements, we have to be very careful with what we do with that. So at this point, I would also back what we did in Budget and Finance and support one A, or eleven A, excuse me, to make sure that we are backing a plan here that moves forward and rewards the good work that you've done, but also says that we don't come necessarily first in this city, that we recognize that we do it at the same time for all Angelenos as well as for employees.
Ms. Zine?
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. I know that Councilman Ridley Thomas has been working on this since 1997, and I know the concern about the security operations, a concern I have is reading the report. I see absolutely nothing there about communications. That's an issue that I've had problems with from the get-go, where the communication system does not exist. When I look at $3.5 million as the initial stage, my question is, what will the final cost be to the taxpayers of the city to provide security for these structures? I know that the security operations has been without a chief for a long time, and you're borrowing personnel from the LAPD to run the operation, and the fine lieutenant just came in last week, and he's thrown in the hopper. I'm obviously very supportive of security, and I'm obviously very concerned about expenditure of taxpayers' dollars at $3.5 million, which is the beginning of what may be God knows how many dollars. I would support a basic improvement of what we have today, but when I see a communication system lacking from this, and you mentioned a consultant, I haven't heard from the consultant. I haven't seen the consultant. The consultant has not been to any of our meetings. I don't know who came up with the plan, but my reservations are, we're starting at $3.5 million, and what is going to be the final expenditure? And as my colleagues have said, with the other city to be protected and the other city facilities, this does not include other city facilities. This bill could be millions and millions of dollars, and the taxpayers of the city are going to pay for it, and what are they going to get to make themselves feel safer? What is the Fire Department going to receive in additional resources? The Police Department receive additional resources? I do support the additional personnel. I think all the personnel should be armed, and I think it's foolish not to have them armed when you're going to hire 40 additional personnel, to have some armed and some not armed. I think they should all be armed. If they weren't in badge and uniform, they should be armed and provide adequate protection. I also think their weaponry has to be examined. But I will support the basic element. But the concern I have is, where does this end up costing us next year and the year after and the year after? Can you answer that? And the consultant also, who is this consultant? This consultant I've never heard from or seen from that was mentioned earlier?
Yes, sir. John Muckrey again. Your points are well taken, as every council member in this room. We prefaced this statement by stating this was the starting point for the civic center less Parker Center. This includes our parking structures, City Hall East and City Hall. We also came in executive session, and what Chief Parks mentioned, that we need to have an umbrella organization look at security citywide. We support that. We understand the weaknesses in the system. I don't want to go into details at this meeting. You mentioned communications. Lieutenant John Incondro, the very first thing I had him look at was communications. We did buy radios. We're working with LAPD to improve communications. You mention arms. We carry .38 caliber weapons. That was what was authorized by council, the previous council, about four years ago. We are coming and asking to go to 9-millimeter weapons, and that is for two reasons. One is training, and one is for interoperability. LAPD carries 9-millimeters, the Marsas carry 9-millimeters. It's ludicrous that we do not. So this is a first step function. You are 100% absolutely right. Where does this go? How much does it cost? And I would just recommend that we go with the umbrella organization, working with the terrorist task force, and identifying where should we really go. This is just a step for this building only. This started before the building was open. An integrated system of technology can be built on. It's not an indoor. And also, the people in, and I appreciate the comments made by many council members, I too feel that the men and women of all the public agencies have done a remarkable job, and I'd be remiss in not giving a pitch into GSD Security, who have been working 12-hour days since September 11th.
Ms. Hunt?
Thank you. You know, I was actually unsure until I began listening to the discussion on how I felt about this, but I must really commend Councilmember Mark Ridley Thomas, because again, he's been working on this for a long time. And at first, I thought this seems self-serving, that we're only worried about ourselves, and will it be perceived by the public that we're only worried about ourselves and by ourselves? I mean, those of us who are the elected officials here. But I'm looking at the group that's assembled here, and I have been one of the most vocal critics of our current security here. But of all the things I've done so far in the city council, I've never gotten more attention or more press from demanding that we bring those metal detectors to the entrance of City Hall. And I've actually had city employees come up and thank me. I've actually had some of our security people come up and thank me. And when we began searching the bags and the lunchboxes and the purses of people who came in, I again had people come up and say thank you. And it wasn't really any of my colleagues who said thank you, but you know what? It was the city employees. It was the ones who work here, day in and day out, and they were the ones who were feeling unsafe. Those were the ones who go up and sit in their offices and work very hard, get here sometimes at 7:00 in the morning, 7:30, sometimes when it's dark, and they're the ones who were feeling nervous, who were feeling unsafe, who were feeling like they weren't sure of who was coming in and out of City Hall. So when I think about it, I agree that we need to take a citywide view of this. I'm very concerned about the harbor area. I'm very concerned that we continue to have a full-time hazmat squad down in the area by the port of Los Angeles, where in my opinion is the next possible place for a terrorist attack. It would be a major disaster in terms of the kinds of chemicals that are stored down there. But you know what? I'm going to support this, Mark, today, because I believe this is a starting point, and I believe it is not just for the elected officials. It's for those who work here in the civic center, day in and day out, and who want to feel safe. All of America wants to feel normal. All of America wants to go back to work. All of America wants to feel like we have not lost something as of September 11th. But I think the only way we're going to get back in the skies, or we're going to be back to feeling normal, is if we feel like we have security. If we feel like we've taken every possible precaution to protect those of us so we can get back to normalcy, that we can come to City Hall day in. And the people that come and visit this historic building, we have children coming here. We have people that take off a day of work from somewhere else to come down and testify on something. We've got to feel like the civic center of Los Angeles is safe and secure, and I think with this amount of money as a starting point is a good thing. It's a good thing for the people of Los Angeles, and I'm going to support this. But I want to make sure that I've got your commitment that we will look farther than the civic center. We will look at making sure that the rest of the city feels safe as well. But I'm going to support this today. I think for this money, it's a good deal. It's important for those of us who work down here every day.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt. Mr. Reyes?
You know, council members, when you're at war, you protect the whole body. You start with the heart. And the heart of the city is here in the center. And I know the propaganda hysteria about secession is that it takes heaven's hands and not us. But quite frankly, if we're not here, who's going to run the store? Who's going to run the city? Now, my understanding of this discussion is that we're going to take care of the whole city. We just need to know how much it's going to cost and how we're going to do this. So we need to protect the valley. We need to protect San Pedro. We need to protect all the regions. But understand that when you wear a suit of armor, you think this plate is here, and you get thicker as you get out towards all your limbs, because you need a whole body to function. And that's what we have here today. We have an effort by our professionals, our staff, they're trying to tell us how to do this, and we're asking the questions. How much is it going to cost? So please, let's not respond to policy by press. I understand what was written out there, and it's, you know, I was in dismay. It's like, all we're trying to do is protect our city and make sure that our government employees, our public servants, feel safe about doing it. So I think we should go with the whole report, and let's take care of this. But let's not fall to policy by press. Let's take care of our city. Let's take care of the heart of the city, and let's take care of every piece that makes it work, including the harbor, including the airport, including the valley, and everything else that makes this place special. So again, I appeal to you, let's be methodical, let's ask the hard questions, and let's understand the cost. But let's do it. Let's not wait. Thank you.
Ms. Perry?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I too want to stand in support of what Mr. Ridley Thomas has proposed today. Excuse me. And to remind everyone that we are in a state of flux and that every day brings new challenges. This is something that we need to get started right away. I think I've indicated before to some of the staff my distress about something, a door being opened, and that I felt that... opened, and that I felt that the closure of that would be very simple, and I note every day when I come in that it's still not done, and it causes me a lot of distress, because it's a straightforward security measure that should be undertaken very rapidly, and that's why I'm standing today in support of this plan, because it does give us some structure, focus, a timeline, and if it proves to be insufficient, we can build on it, but it's a good first step, and I hope that we can all support it.
Mr. Ridley-Thomas. I'm sorry, I'm looking at the thing here, Mr. Holden, if you wish to speak for a first time. Go ahead.
That's the third time that's happened. Mr. Perry was speaking for the second time. President, you chair the meeting, and it should be called in order which they indicate they choose to speak.
As you know, the system is computerized, Mr. Holden, go ahead.
Well, we had my deputy check it out this time, because it happened last Friday, the last meeting. Come on, fairness, should be top priority here, along with security. Now, I can understand this plan that you presented to us today. I have some concerns about the urgency. The urgency was not triggered to the extent that it is today, until after September the 11th. There've been a number of comments that Mr. Thomas, with the support of the council, urging of the council, that you improved security at City Hall and these facilities for a number of years, and you've been in leadership, in charge of the department, charged with that responsibility, and very little, nothing was done, in fact, you identified Meckler funds that would could hire 40 additional people, which means those positions allocated to your department for that purpose, and you didn't fill them, which means that you're saying you have done a good job, by your admission. The Meckler fund repaid comes from the general fund, and you state that this is not general fund money. Why you got paid on that bond? Through general fund, so don't come telling me that. Fact of the matter is that I'm not very pleased at all. Number one, the system you put in place, made by design or otherwise, is, takes a lot of time. You have six people standing there, driving through the gate this morning, five or six, certainly more than you need. You asked for 40 more people. You got two or three out of the exit area. You're not deploying the people proficiently. You're not getting a big bang for your buck, and I should give you more money? I'm going to assume that you're going to waste that. I want to see a more streamlined operation. There's some question about why can't the employees be admitted more quickly, and have to stand in line every time they go from City Hall to City Hall East to South. You know, hard part. Mr. Thomas should be credited, but you should not receive any credits. If you're in charge of the system, bring some experts if you can't make it work, because you really have not, to knock to my satisfaction. And I'm not going to throw good money after bad today, even though I want a system in place. What we have, yes, may be inadequate, but at the same time, if you give us 80%, 90% security, and we spend $5 million more, if you give you 95%, is it worth it? Do we want to go that extra mile? Today, I'm not prepared to do that, because you have not convinced me, and because I was not calling order, just got me even more upset. So I'm going to sit down, and I have to continue, Mr. Thomas, I'm not happy at all.
Mr. Ridley-Thomas.
Mr. President, members of the council, would you do your level best not to aggravate Mr. Holden? It could...
That shall be a collective effort.
Yeah, right. Would you bring Mr. Holden some water, please? Give him another, give him something else then, another canister of water, help him. Mr. President, members of the council, I'm going to yield a bit of my time to Julie Butcher, who came to speak, and then I'll resume for a minute or so and close.
Skipping because it's so urgent, representing the folks in uniform all over the city that are attempting to make us all feel as safe as possible in these very changed times, this is but the first step in helping to make sure that the 7,000 people that work here, and the hundreds of people, tens of people now, who come and visit this building and do business on a daily basis, feel as safe as possible, and obviously, all things happen out of that sense of safety. This is not just since 1997, there has been advocacy on this for at least 13 years, of which I am aware, and this is essential immediate action. We hope, the union hopes, that this is not the only action that would happen in this regard, but it is a first action of substance that has been thought out, that moves on an incremental improvement that has happened over the last number of years. And I would just ask and urge you that the best not be the enemy of the good, and you need to do what you can immediately, obviously, it's not the last step, but the first. Thank you, and thank you, council member.
Thank you very much, Ms. Butcher. Members of the council, I reiterate a point that was made earlier, this is a first step, it is not to be considered as exclusive of any other ideas, it is a mistake not to think that the global impact of what's before us is not taken under consideration. This is a phase, a critical phase of importance that we take this step. This is a comprehensive security needs assessment plan, this is one iteration in that effort. Those who raised the question of whether we can afford it, I simply assert that we can simply not afford not to do it. Excuse the double negative, we must do this. Why? Because if we want to send a clear message that we are serious about security in a constituent-friendly manner, we must act preventively and protectively. That's essentially what is before you, and one B, I urge your unanimous support of the same. Thank you, Mr. Perry.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley-Thomas. Mr. Pacheco for a second time.
I'd like to move the previous question on the substitute motion.
Any other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, which motion is now before us? You currently have two motions before you, neither of them are substitute, both of them support one, Mr. Ridley-Thomas's supports moving number B, which is the joint ITGS personnel, and Mr. Pacheco moved A, which is the budget and finance report, A was submitted last, so that should probably go first. Correct. Budget and finance. Finance report, so the first motion before. I heard a no vote on that report. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Seven ayes, three noes.
That does not pass. We have the other motion with the ITGS committee report.
Members of the council, security in our Civic Center is important, we appealed you to vote aye on this matter.
Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Six ayes, four noes.
That one also failed, both items will go over to the next council meeting. Next item, please. That is it for the special meeting? Do you wish to adjourn the special meeting? Mr. Holden.
And it was A? A, that was a swing vote, I guess.
Motion to reconsider, item A, Mr. Ridley-Thomas, do you wish to speak on reconsideration?
No, no speaking on reconsideration, I'm just going to vote no on reconsideration.
Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on reconsideration. Mr. Holden changes his mind. Next item, please. Do you wish to adjourn the special meeting? Let's adjourn the special meeting and return to the regular meeting agenda. Next item? That brings you back to the regular meeting, item number 18, or concession items, do you wish to hold those on the desk? Let's hold that on the desk. Now, it's time for public comment on non-agenda items. An opportunity for members of the public to address the council on matters within our jurisdiction but not appearing on today's agenda, and seeing no requests, public comment appeared for this meeting is closed. Before going to closed session, I know there are several presentations members have been waiting patiently to make, appreciate your patience, we were in between presentations by Mr. Reyes, so I will call on Mr. Reyes for his second presentation.
Members of the council, this morning we have with us Mr. William Evans, who is retiring today after 29 years of working for federal government in the Internal Revenue Service. A graduate of Cal State LA, Mr. Evans has been working in one of the specialized fields on the IRS. The cases that has been assigned are described internally as jeopardy and terminations. During the late 70s and 80s, this entailed working on high profile narcotics cases. Essentially, Mr. Evans was involved in finding the high influx of illegal activities throughout the United States. One of his cases involved several foreign nationals who were living in San Diego and Orange Counties. These individuals were collecting, receiving large quantities of US currency, the proceeds of which came from the sale of illegal narcotics. With some clever detective work, Mr. Evans was able to uncover a deposit slip that was found in a briefcase that belonged to one of the foreign nationals. This discovery eventually led to the seizure of approximately $8 million. Although the department, Mr. Evans has been a strong advocate of employees' rights. He has worked with the local union, and currently the national vice president for District 7 and National Treasury Employees Union. And I understand that he plans on continuing his work in this capacity. Members, I thought it was important that we invite Mr. Evans here today, because it's important that we highlight the work of government employees, by the city, the county, and those that are at the federal level, who improve the lives of our constituents, because we're essentially a hard same business, and that is, we are in the business of serving people. And too often, the good work that's done is glossed over and hardly recognized. Well, to Mr. Evans, I wanted to say thank you, to appreciate your good work, and for the honor that you give to anyone who calls themselves a public servant. In these times in which we're dealing with our national crisis, it's our ability to track down those foreign nationals who mean us harm, and it is this kind of work that we should be recognizing again. Thank you, Mr. Evans.
Ms. Perry, are you ready with your presentation?
Thank you very much, Mr. President, I'd like to call up Terry Goldstein, Chieko Yamamoto, and Rowena Rona from Panasonic Company West, for their support, and their company's support for an extraordinary program that has been conducted throughout the city called Rhapsody in Taps. It's an educational program for children, and it's been going on for 11 years, and they have reached out to over 17,000 students from inner-city Los Angeles to attend their Rhapsody in Taps performance, and it gives children their many times first opportunity to enjoy the theater. Rhapsody in Taps is a Los Angeles-based touring company featuring dancers and musicians with exciting and innovative programs centered around rhythm tap dancing and jazz music. And this company's performance history includes TV appearances, and appearances at the Dorothy Chandler Pavilion, and they had their New York debut at the Lincoln Center at an out-of-doors festival. Today, they're here to invite 1,600 students to the 2001 Rhapsody in Taps Children's Program on Friday, October the 26th, at the Japan American Theater here in the 9th Council District, and they're inviting all schools from the Los Angeles Unified School District, and I wanted to present this certificate to them today, and ask Mr. Goldstein, or Ms. Yamamoto, or Ms. Rona just to say a few words.
Thank you very much, we're honored to be here today to receive this award, we're happy to let all these children come through, again, this year we'll have over 20,000 children come through, and it's all because of the generosity of Panasonic, we're proud to be employees of the company that works within the community, and we want to thank the council for their attention today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. The chair recognizes Mr. Zine for his presentation.
There are a few people in this world who take on a challenge, don't get tired, don't give up, continue fighting. Particular case in hand, we have two individuals who took on a challenge, an incredible task. It started a number of years ago with the dismantling of the Los Angeles Police Department Senior Lead Program, and these two ladies got together, coordinated an effort, and have been tireless in their efforts to maintain, bring it back to its full complement. They had a ceremony, a memorial service, at Woodley Park a number of years ago, when the senior lead program was disbanded, and they have been working tirelessly to bring that back, working with the council, working with the media, working with the communities throughout the city of Los Angeles. Those two individuals, Paige Miller and Sandy Munz, have been a team that have gone throughout the city of Los Angeles, championing the cause of public safety and the rekindling for the senior lead program in the city of Los Angeles. And it's my honor to present to both of them certificates of appreciation for their efforts, and I'd like to read a couple of the paragraphs. Your tireless efforts on behalf of the Los Angeles Police Department Senior Lead Program have not gone unnoticed. You are to be commended for your extraordinary willingness and exemplary commitment to serve your community by working towards the reinstatement of the senior lead program. The people of Los Angeles and Los Angeles City Council hereby award you this certificate of appreciation for exemplary efforts and accomplishments which have been of great value to the community and have helped to further the common goal of making our city a better place in which to live. They have gone from the valley to San Pedro, to the east side, to the west side, and continuing their task, continuing their challenge to reinstate the senior lead program in the city of Los Angeles to its full 106 state officer complement. I'd like to also present to them, remember 9/11, that have been commissioned by the Los Angeles Police Protective League, I'd like to present each of the fine ladies, Paige Miller and Sandy Munz, with these pins, and also with the certificates of appreciation, and give them an opportunity to say a few words.
Thank you, Councilman Zine. Councilmembers, for the past four years, Sandy and I have spoken to numerous Neighborhood Watch and Homeowners Association groups across Los Angeles, we discovered that they had one thing in common, they all felt they had the best senior lead officer. That is an incredible accomplishment for 170 officers, roughly 2% of the LAPD force. Sandy and I have never aspired for political appointment, political office, and certainly not for financial gain. Our only agenda is to bring senior lead officers and community policing back to Los Angeles in an effective and productive way. Fortunately, we live in a country that allows freedom of speech, and we will continue to rebut and correct the unique interpretations of statistical data put forth by members of the LAPD, and we will continue to have patience while educating and enlightening the new police commission and its president. The LAPD has taken some serious hits the past four years, morale has plummeted, the numbers of officers has dangerously declined, and Neighborhood Watch has been decimated. It is up to all of us to rebuild this now. The sad truth is, the reinstatement of slows is half-baked at best, and almost nonexistent in some divisions, it is not the successful program we had four years ago. We need to see all divisions treated equally, and we will leave no division behind. So council members, Pacheco, Reyes, Perry, Ridley-Thomas, Galanter, we will continue to fight along with your constituents and for your constituents. We are especially concerned about some of the divisions in your areas, and we ask that you stand as a united council on this particular issue. We've had the opportunity to meet with almost all of the new members, except for Councilmember Perry, and we look forward to that very shortly. Mayor Hahn, we'd like to thank you for supporting the reinstatement of slows. Say a special thank you to you and your staff's efforts. Personal thank you to my family for your love and support, my fearless partner for four years, and God knows where we have been together. We won't go into that, but... Thank yous to the community and to our respective senior lead officers, Ed Brentlinger and Mike Jensen. You started this, you inspired us with your great works, and we've had the opportunity to see all these slows in action. And we are very proud of all the slows, 170 across Los Angeles. We're honored today, and as many of you know, we ain't done yet. Well, for four years, four years ago when we started this journey, we never thought it would be such a long road. But you all know just how valuable senior leads are to your offices and your constituents. So you'll understand why people have fought so long and so hard to bring such a good thing back to the city of Los Angeles. While we greatly appreciate Councilman Zine's recognition today, we must all understand that the fight isn't over. Neighborhood Watch needs to be reinstated, and senior leads definitely need to be brought back fully 100%. A sincere thank you to Councilman Zine for being the champion of senior leads and his efforts to fully reinstate the program. Kudos to you, Councilmen, for taking it upon yourself to find office space for the slows in your division. Your constituents and the officers will appreciate that, I'm sure. I'd like to thank Candace Campbell and Eric from Councilman Zine's office. Excuse me, oh, 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 excuse me, Councilman Wax in New York. From Councilman Wax's office and the Councilman himself. Thanks to the world's greatest neighbors, my husband and son, and Paige. I'm gonna get emotional. A special and sincere thank you to all those very dedicated officers that have given their hearts to the community. And the one thing I've heard so long and so hard is, "My senior lead is the best from all across this city." And I want to let you know, mine is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Zine. The Chair recognizes Mr. Holden for a brief presentation.
Good morning, Mr. President, Members. Today, we are going to give recognition to an organization that's been successful in training individuals who've been lost their jobs or on welfare, in the program Welfare, the work program that's sponsored by the city of Los Angeles, and put people in a position to become more gainfully employed, so they can support themselves and their families, and contribute significantly to the growth and development of their respective communities. This is one such organization. I'm pleased to welcome the staff, clients, and friends of the Wilshire Metro One-Stop Center, located in the 10th District. Mine is standing there, about 15-plus such stop centers in the city of Los Angeles. The federal government has required certification of each of them. Initially, they were allowed to operate and to do what they do best, and that is to train welfare people, people lost their jobs, and put them back to work. The certification process is stringent, requires that the center have a strong customer service focus and reward excellent performance. Only four One-Stop Centers in the city have been certified. Others will be. The Wilshire Metro Center One-Stop is operated by the Community Career Development, a nonprofit organization. It offers a wide range of workforce development services for individuals seeking employment and training opportunities. At this time, I'd like to call forth Ms. Wilmer Warden, the Executive Director of the Community Career Development. And I'll present to her this Community Career Development Metro One-Stop Center certificate of congratulations.
On behalf of Community Career Development and our many partners, I'd like to recognize some of the partners who are here. State of California Employment Development Department, Alan Parklow. And I know Roberto Baraga from Valley Economic Development Center is also here as well. All of us collectively make up the Wilshire Metro One-Stop. Our organization for many years has been making a difference in our community. We are part of the community building infrastructure for the city of Los Angeles. We make a difference, one job at a time. We achieve this through programs that assist our residents establish promising careers by working with businesses not just in meeting their workforce requirements, but by providing them with every possible resource to help them achieve higher levels of growth and excellence. We pride ourselves in being an innovative organization. We have introduced many programs, including entrepreneurship as an alternative to economic sufficiency. And also, we have launched a program called Employer Network to tap into the employment opportunities of small businesses. The September 11 terrorist attack has had a devastating impact on our local economy, an economy that was already challenged even prior to the September 11 tragedy. Now, more than ever, we need to band together to hasten economic recovery and the healing of our community. In this spirit, we would like to extend our offer of support to the Council and to the communities you represent to use our center, to use the services of our center to support the key community initiatives that you have. Again, on behalf of Community Career Development, the Wilshire Metro One-Stop and all our partners, we would like to thank Councilmember Nate Holden and all the honorable members of this Council for recognizing our work, and we look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Holden. Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Council. I'd ask that you join me in welcoming to the podium a giant in the area of natural history, a scholar, an author, and one who has made his mark on the city of Los Angeles, Dr. James Lawrence Powell. Would you give me a warm round of applause? Dr. Powell has served as President and Director of the Los Angeles County Museum of Natural History since 1994. He has there enabled to oversee the oldest and largest natural history museum in the western United States with more than 33 million items, ranging from actual bull-sized dinosaur skeletons to the largest collection of gold in the United States. Dr. Powell's leadership, the Natural History Museum, has greatly expanded its award-winning programs, including outreach to schoolchildren, families, and has brought to Los Angeles exciting and important exhibits about the environment, diverse cultures, and human, as well as natural history. It's worth knowing that Dr. Powell has served as an adjunct professor at the School of Public Administration at the University of Southern California. In his past life, he has served as President and CEO of Franklin Institute Science Museum in Philadelphia. He also has distinguished himself in the field of higher education, having served as President of Reed College, President at Franklin and Marshall College, and also as Acting President at Oberlin College. Author of many important texts in the area of natural history, as well as geology, and leadership. "One Entitled: Pathways to Leadership: Achieving and Sustaining Success, A Guide for Nonprofit Executives." He served on any number of boards, a National Science Board, a Committee on Undergraduate Science and Engineering Education, and the Education and Human Resources Committee. It should be noted that he has been awarded that of Being Professor of the Year in 2001, the Master of Public Policy Program, School of Public Policy Planning and Development at USC. And Dr. Powell has an asteroid named after him. Asteroid 9379, Powell. That's all right, isn't it? Anybody here have an asteroid named after them? All right. You're one of a kind, Jim. So, we take this opportunity to salute the leadership and the contribution of James Powell to our city and to this region as having served in a leadership capacity at the Natural History Museum. And we say, now therefore be resolved by the adoption of the resolution, the Los Angeles City Council does hereby recognize you, Jim, for your outstanding commitment, dedication to the Natural History Museum of Los Angeles County and to the greater community, and we wish you the best in your long and happy retirement. And we do not believe that you're going to retire. We just know that you are moving from this particular venue to bigger and better things. Dr. James Lawrence Powell. May I acknowledge all those Expedition Park stakeholders? Won't you stand, those of you here in Natural History Museum, persons who have come to salute Dr. Powell? We appreciate you and thank you. Give them a big round of applause.
Councilman Ridley Thomas, Mr. President, thank you very much for this honor, which means a great deal to me. I want to thank my family, the staff of the Natural History Museum, many of whom are here today, and my colleagues in Expedition Park from the California Science Center, the California African-American Museum, the Coliseum, Epic, one of yours, the University of Southern California, and the Park Manager's Office. Now, that list reveals that Expedition Park is a very complex organization with entities from the city, the county, the state, and a great private university right across the street. To get all of these entities moving in anything close to the same direction requires something like the herding of cats. Now, we have been blessed to have one of the all-time great cat herders leading us, and that is the gentleman to my left, the Councilman from the 8th District, Mr. Mark Ridley Thomas. He is the proximate cause of the rejuvenation of Expedition Park, and there's more to come. Thank you again.
Mr. President, at the request of the mayor, and I'm going to ask Deputy Mayor Brian Williams if he would join me. I'd like for us to acknowledge and give a big round of applause to one who moves a little higher, the one and only Leslie H. Brown. Les? Where is he? Come on over here. Well, well, well. Les Brown has been with the city of Los Angeles as he began his employment in the office of the city attorney in 1977 as a prosecutor in the central trial section of the office. And during his time in the criminal branch, he conducted over 70 court and jury trials. Les has moved on from there to a range of positions in the office of the city attorney. In 1980, he moved to Employee Relations Division. He then moved to the position of Senior City Attorney and was named the Managing Assistant of the Labor Relations Division in the year 2000. Over the 20 years, Les has represented and/or advised general managers of most, if not all, of the city's operating departments, as well as the mayor, the city council, and other elected officials of the city. He has handled a broad range of matters, including civil litigation in both state and federal courts, appeals, arbitrations, administrative hearings, and a very substantial role in an advisory function, which has resulted in numerous published opinions in both the state and federal appellate courts. In addition to his legal duties, Les has been instrumental in the computerization of the city attorney's office and has chaired the Office of Automation Committee since its inception. By way of background, you should note that he received his undergraduate degree in Law and Society from the University of California at Santa Barbara in 1977. His JD from the University of California, Davis, and has been admitted to practice. He was admitted to practice before all the courts of the state of California at that time. In addition to that, the United States Court for Central Division of the District of California, the 9th Circuit Courts of Appeal, and the United States Supreme Court. And so, whereas this young man has been an active member of the UCSB Alumni Association and the John M. Langston Bar Association, Ladera Heights Civic Association, and a range of other activities, and not the least of which a committed Laker fan. Married to city attorney Terry Martin Brown and the proud father of three lovely children, Phyllis, Stefan, and Anna. So, then, Members of the Council, now therefore be resolved that by the adoption of this resolution, the mayor and the Los Angeles City Council do hereby congratulate Leslie E. Brown, Sr., on his new appointment as a judge with the Los Angeles County Superior Court, and commend him on his 24 years of dedicated service to the city of Los Angeles. Les?
On behalf of Mayor Hahn. On behalf of Mayor Hahn, we now give you, on behalf of Mayor Hahn, the one and only... On behalf of Mayor Hahn. Did you want to repeat that again? On behalf, on behalf of the Honorable Mayor of the city of Los Angeles, the one and only...
The former city attorney?
The former...
Controller?
City Controller. The former city attorney, the mayor of the city, James K. Hahn.
Chair recognizes our Honorable Mayor, James Hahn.
Thank you very much, Members of the Council. I am very proud of my good friend and colleague for many years, Leslie Brown's appointment to Superior Court in and for the county of Los Angeles. You know, these last two days have been extremely heartwarming to me. My classmate, who started with me in the city attorney's office back in 1975, Carlos Moreno, was just confirmed to the state Supreme Court, and now Les Brown on the Superior Court here in the county of Los Angeles. I couldn't be happier. Over the years, Les and I started out as deputies together. We ran the master calendar court, the traffic court, for many years. We made sure that, you know, the people who were charged with driving under influence met justice, and we took care of that. And then, I was so fortunate again, once I became city attorney, to spend 16 years working with Mr. Brown. He was an outstanding lawyer, who did a great job representing the city in every legal matter, gives great advice, and just a great person. Someone who was a great family man, who cares very much about his children, but also cared very much for his client, the city of Los Angeles. very much for his client, the city of Los Angeles, and did an excellent job representing the people of the great city of Los Angeles. I know he will do a great job in his new role as a judge, and I certainly admire him for being willing to listen to lawyers all day. So...
I do that at home, too.
Yeah, that's right. He reminds me, he does that at home, too. But I, you know, he may not be going home tonight very early, Mr. Brown, but certainly the fact that he met his bride, Terry Martin Brown, in the city attorney's office. City's a good place to work, it's a great family, and we wish you the best.
Mr. President, from the office of the city attorney, the chief deputy, Terry Bowers.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of Rocky Delgadoio in the new front office, I can't say enough about Les. When you come in during a transition, it's absolutely critical to identify the people that can assist you hit the ground running, and Les was one of those people who was of immense aid to us. You come in and you, from the outside, and you look at an office, and it's easy to determine the people who really provide the foundation for the excellent work in a place, and it was clear from the outset that Les was one of those individuals. His advice is unerring. He is just the bedrock for the office, and we're going to miss him tremendously. There is an advantage, though, because now we have someone on the bench who understands the importance of our misdemeanor prosecutions, and we expect him to remember his roots. Our congratulations to Les.
Mr. President, members of the council, Mr. Mayor, the honorable Les Brown.
Mr. President, Honorable Council, Mr. Mayor, and everybody, honored guests. You know what? We all had to wait today, and this was well worth it. I really appreciate everybody being here today, and it's so appropriate that it came down this way, that these are the people that I really care about who are here. And so many people in this room have been with me since I began with the city, and I'm really going to miss you guys. Everybody keeps asking how I feel about this, and it's truly one of those mixed emotions things. Yes, I'm very happy about the new position, but my goodness, 24 years with all you guys, and it's a lot, you know? And I'm really, really moved by all of this. I had this 20-minute speech that I was going to give, but I'm supposed to get sworn in in five minutes, so... In fact, by Mr. Han's classmate, Carlos Moreno will be doing the honors. So, I want to thank everyone for everything. I want to thank the city council for the experience, for the challenge of appearing before you, being challenged to state our positions and to support our positions. I'd like to say that on behalf of the lawyers in the city attorney's office, though, that one thing I would like to remind everyone is that we don't make the facts, we're the ones that... We're the ones that have to come and try to manipulate those and massage them and make them palatable to you, and we appreciate your attention and your support of our office, and we'll be in my office for another five minutes. And I just want to say again, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know you had a very busy schedule today. I appreciate your coming in. Mr. Ridley Thomas, thank you so much. It's been an honor working with you over the years, and I will continue to see you Loyola High School. And I want to thank my family, who's been so supportive over the years, and particularly these last few days, because this has been a weird time. Lots of ups and downs, and I wasn't always the nicest person in the world, but everybody's been really supportive, as they always have been. And I, oh, I should introduce them. This first person, this one kind of looks like me. This is my youngest son, Steven. And Steven is an eighth grader at Harvard Westlake School. I'm very proud of him. And young lady here is Anna. Anna is a sophomore at Culver City High School. And we have Philip, who is a sophomore at Loyola High School. We have my mother-in-law, Ruby Martin. We have my dear mother, Minion Brown.
Who's also Angelina.
And we have... We have my aunt, Marie Oliver. You want me to tell her? She's always been much like a mother to me, honestly, and I really appreciate that very much. And then, last but certainly not least, we have my wonderful wife, Assistant City Attorney, Terry Martin Brown. And I have my brother, Cheryl Brown, who's over there as a photographer. My other brother, Bruce Smith, over there. And where did Diane? Diane? And then my sister-in-law, Kami. So, thank you all for being here, and thank you very much for the honor. I really appreciate it.
The chair recognizes Council President Alex Padilla for presentation.
He gave me a script.
I don't know if you told earlier that you wanted to stay maybe for the crossing guard too. So, thank you very much, Mr. Chair, colleagues. I think it's a special privilege to have our mayor here joining us in this particular presentation. Also joined by my colleagues, Councilmember Reyes, Councilmember Pacheco, Councilmember Garcetti. And why don't I turn it over to you, Mr. Mayor, first, as the leader of our city?
Thank you very much, Council President Padilla, members of the council. Certainly a great day in Los Angeles. Let me start by saying buenos dias. Pleased to be here with the Lozano family, celebrating 75 years of La Opinión, founded by the grandfather of Monica and Jose and Francisco, Ignacio Lozano. It's been circulating since 1926 here in Los Angeles, been telling the stories of our vibrant Latino community here in Los Angeles. Certainly a paper that is the largest Spanish-language company, paper in the country, and among the 100 largest newspapers, period, in the United States of America. So, one of the great things I get to do as mayor is to name a day for somebody. And today, as mayor, I will say, yo James K. Han, alcalde de la ciudad de Los Angeles, proclamo el viernes 19 de octubre como el día de la opinión en la ciudad de Los Angeles.
I think the mayor's taking Spanish classes, doing pretty good there. Well, I think he has said most of it. We are celebrating 75 years of La Opinión in the city of Los Angeles, 75 years of not only quality journalism, but 75 years of providing a voice for the Spanish-speaking communities in Los Angeles, and 75 years of making that voice and that opinion known in every community, in every corner of our city. We, on the city council, would also like to present the following resolution to the Lozano family. And I'll just read the ending. Now therefore, be it resolved that Friday, October 19th, is La Opinión Day in the city of Los Angeles. Y por lo tanto, que se declare el viernes 19 de octubre como el día de la opinión en la ciudad de Los Angeles, presented on behalf of the entire city council. Mr. Pacheco, did you wish to say a few words?
Colleagues, I would simply like to just join in celebrating this day of recognition for La Opinión. They have been an asset to us in the community, and we hope to see that they grow even more as they continue on doing such a valuable service for us. Thank you so much.
Just want to take the opportunity to say congratulations. As a person who's studied urban planning and learned about the need to have a voice heard from all sectors of our communities, it's been, we've been very fortunate, La Opinión, to articulate that voice, to ensure equity and fairness for all communities. So, thank you so much.
Just very quickly, felicitaciones. I think that all of us know there's so many stories here in Los Angeles, and I really, for folks who aren't regular readers of the Ciudad page, read it. There are stories there that you will not find anywhere else covered in the city, and you do an immense service to all of us with those stories. So, thank you.
And we're already running up on deadline, but we invite members of the Lozano families, please say a few words.
Mr. President, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, on behalf of the entire Lozano family, I want to express our deepest gratitude for this terrific recognition. I think it's not often that politicians and journalists can get together and have a good time with each other. Lord knows, we don't always agree, do we? But it is terrific to be recognized as members of the fourth estate and your partners in good government, as well as recognizing the accomplishments of the people who went before us at La Opinión and have contributed so much to the growth and development of the Latino community. On behalf of all of them and all of us who continue to work at La Opinión, and especially the Lozano family, I want to thank every member of the city government who has recognized us today, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And for those of you who are wondering, now, if I can only get La Opinión delivered to my home, we have some news for you, but I'm sure they'll be in touch.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Garcetti.
Thank you, and it's nice to see you in the chair for the first time.
It's comfortable up here, thank you.
There's not enough bunting up there, I think, for you, but I'm glad you have your flag tie on.
Thank you.
It gives me great pleasure with the mayor today to recognize one of the many, many unsung heroes we have in this city. And if I can ask Janie to come forward with her family. Janie T. Tandy is one of the many, many crossing guards we have in this city, and we have a little bit of a heroic story to share today. The mayor and myself are recognizing her. She's a crossing guard at Oakwood and Alexandria in Hollywood and has been since November 19, 1996. On April 19th, 2001, she saved a child from being abducted. While on duty at the corner of Oakwood and Alexandria streets in Hollywood, she observed a man stop and converse with a fifth-grade child. He got out of his car, grabbed the child, and attempted to pull the child into his car. Ms. Tandy ran towards and shouted at the would-be kidnapper, which caused him to release the child. She later provided a detailed description of the suspect and his vehicle to the Los Angeles Police Department, which is currently searching for the suspect. But were it not for her bravery, we would have had an abducted child. And there are so many crossing guards that Ms. Tandy represents here today. And we, as the city, wanted to recognize the work that they do for our children and the children of this city each and every day, keeping them secure. And on behalf of the city council, wanted to present this resolution to you, and I know your family's here as well, and the mayor will want to add some words to that
Thank you, Councilman Garcetti, Councilmen Zain, members of the council. As mayor of Los Angeles, I also want to commend Janie T. Tandy for service above and beyond the call of duty. Someone who was there to make sure children get to and from school safely, that they can cross the streets safely, also realized when a child was presented with a terrible danger and a terrible situation, in her bravery and her courage in the face of danger to rescue that child from a fate that we don't know what would have happened, needs to be commended and should be commended. And certainly on behalf of the mayor's office, in fact, on behalf of the entire city of Los Angeles, I want to thank you again for being who you are, being the kind of person you are, and protecting our children.
Well, my job is to protect the kids, and I didn't think about my life. All I was doing is doing my job, that we should protect the kids.
We're so proud to be here. There are so many wonderful employees throughout the city. We are very, very, very proud of our crossing guard here and our other employees who stand by, side by side with her every day out there for the safety in our streets. Thank you very much, the council members, for recognizing this special, special deed.
I have one more presentation to give this morning, and it's only been about three and a half, come on up. It's only been about three and a half months that I've been a city council member. But each and every day of my campaign, I mentioned a lot of groups that had supported me, but there was one group that I was most proud of, not because they supported me, but because of the work that they did in the community. And these were the players, the parents of the Naciones Unidas Soccer League, the United Nations Soccer League. There are about 5,000 children in our city that every single week play in the league of the United Nations Soccer League. And what moved me so much, and what made me want this city to become a partner with them, is that you have parents living in, for instance, the Silver Lake area that I represent, who drive every single night all the way to North Hollywood, simply because there is no space for their children in the city to play where they live. There are no neighborhoods that have soccer fields. And because of an act of love, these parents will drive every single night to North Hollywood, to CD2, where there are some soccer fields, which are way overused as it is, and simply give them the gift of recreation. We have a very special group from that league here today. They are the Campeones de Campeones, the champions of champions, and they come, yes, from Silver Lake. Silver Lake won the whole citywide competition this year and became the Campeones de Campeones. And the players who we have here today that I'd like to recognize by name, Michael Morales, Eldo Robles, Carlos Potillo, who's the coach, Kelvin Amaya, Alejandro Colon, Charlie Escobar, Edgardo Escobar, Waldo Escobar, obviously the Escobars are well represented, Edwin Castro, Edward Moktazuma, Stuart Moktazuma, David Ayala, Carlos Trejo, Edi Catalán, or Eddie, sorry, Catalán, and Pedro Pimentel. Their coaches are here today, Carlos Portillo and Jenny Portillo. But it gives me immense joy to be able to present to you a certificate to honor your championship. I was able to be there the day that they won. And I want to also recognize Jose Roy Garcia, who is the organizer of the Naciones Unidas Soccer League. And he is one of these unsung heroes in this city, who one day will make an excellent wrecking parks commissioner. He is somebody who has tirelessly worked on behalf of young people in this city to simply give them a place to play and a cause to believe in. And his work keeps more kids out of trouble in this city and giving them a glimpse at the future, and we need to reward his work and join with him. But it gives me great honor today to give this to Jenny Portillo for the whole team and to have a few words from her.
On behalf of the team Silver Lake, I want to say thank you to Mr. Eric Garcetti for walking up here on City Hall. And that this team, and first of all, we had like basic skills, and then with the effort that all the parents put in, we basically grew up and we got a good team. And what joined us together was belief, trust, and that if we want to make something happen, we have to believe in ourselves. And mostly like kids that lives around the block that ask us, where do you guys play? Or they ask us many questions. And we told them, we play in North Hollywood. And many kids say, oh, that's great, but too bad you guys can't play around here at LACC. And we would like to thank you for everything you have done for us, supporting us, believing in us, and all these kids, because basically they're the ones who play, not the coaches. And without them, we wouldn't be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, good afternoon, everybody. My name is Jose Roy Garcia and I'm very proud to be right here with the Silver Lake team. You know, this team, for almost four years, having gone to North Hollywood to play soccer. Sometimes they had to play around eight o'clock, so around six o'clock in the morning, they had to be ready to go there and play. I hope one day they have their own soccer field right here in District Number 13. I hope everybody in the City Council, when Mr. Eddie Garcetti asks for your help to put or to open more soccer field, just say yes. Because we need some soccer field, not only soccer field, any sport areas for our children. And so, in the name of United Nations Soccer League, who represent about 5,000 kids, I want to say thank you to Mr. Eddie Garcetti for this award, to our league for today. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
For the rest of the teams, watch out for Silver Lake. They're coming back next year. And we wish them good luck. The chair recognizes Council President Alex Padilla for presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Colleagues, surprise! This bright, beautiful young lady standing right next to me has been an intern in my office for the last month. Her name is Nena Azobia and is a participant this year, as we speak, in the Coro Fellows Program here based in Los Angeles. And she has done just a tremendous job. For many of you, you're familiar with the Coro Foundation. It's a leadership and training program in politics and public affairs. Nena's been in my office September 18th, where she jumped in with both feet, working with several of my legislative staff members on some of the harder policy issues that have come across the council in the last 30 days. She dove in and tried to understand the logic behind some of our proprietary departments, especially our Department of Water and Power and our Department of Airports, has briefed me for meetings that I've had. And I've been truly impressed by her ability to understand the issues and the challenges ahead, particularly for the airport in this moment in our history, from safety and security standpoint to the economic impact, to labor relations, and all of its infrastructure. So I wanted to take a moment to recognize her and what she's contributed to my office and to the city for the last 30 days, only as a down payment, because I know she will be contributing to our city and to our society for the rest of her life. I wish I could say we could keep her for longer, but I know she's got other assignments that await her as her fellowship continues. But I want to just say a brief thank you and congratulations. And your next Coro assignment is right now, you get to say a few words.
I want to thank you, Councilmember Alex Padilla, so much. It's been an unforgettable opportunity to work within your office, with your staff, very welcoming staff. I also had the opportunity to talk with some of the other council members and I appreciate that. I've had a great experience within City Council and being able to go to your district and see the tangible results of policy. And I just want to thank you again tremendously. Thank you.
And thank you again, Mr. Chair. I do have one additional presentation. We have to thank her for her patience. She's been with the city for 21 years. We're going to be celebrating her, not retirement, at least her retirement from the city. She's on to bigger and better things. We're not leaving her on her own this time. Ms. Hinda Rudd, excuse me, is retiring today from her position as the city's records management officer. You try dealing with the volume of records in this city. After 21 years with the city, she earned her master's degree in history from the University of Utah, master's degree in library science from the University of Southern California. See Mr. Rudy Thomas's eyebrows go up. She was recruited to the city clerk's office in 1980 and became the city's first archivist. Did I pronounce that right? Archives, archivist. She was promoted to records management officer in 1985. Been active in the Los Angeles City Historical Society, previously serving as its president, and established the Friends of the Los Angeles City Archives. She's written a comprehensive bibliography of books that truly tell the history of the city from a number of perspectives, from 1970 to 1990. And she's also currently directing the production of a collaborative effort of authors to encapsulate historians and authors and their history of Los Angeles city government for the last 150 years. As I mentioned, she's retiring from the city, but she's not retiring in the sense of the word that we all grow accustomed. She's on to bigger and better things. She's moving over to USC. She has accepted a position there where she will conduct oral history and student internships. And just as important, it's all her contributions to the city of Los Angeles. She has raised two children and has two grandsons I know she's very, very proud of. Before I formally present this resolution, I invite our city clerk, Mr. Carey, to say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. President. I first met Hinda when I was working for the chief legislative analyst office and I had approximately four hours to find a contract with the Coliseum Commission involving the Oakland Raiders when they were coming down here. I called this poor woman and told her what I was looking for and within a half an hour, she called me back and had the contract. I will also tell you that she is the sole person who created the archives. I have an upper vault in the clerk's office, it is still there, where we stored many records going back to the 1850s. We hired Hinda to basically index and corral these records, to basically keep the history of the city of Los Angeles. I know a lot of people come to this building thinking history is not relevant to anything. But frankly, ladies and gentlemen, I think we can learn a lot from what we did in the past and what we did in the past will probably guide us into the future. So on behalf of Rex Layton and Lee Martinez and now me, I truly commend Hinda Rudd for creating the city's historical records program. She's passionate about this program. She constantly bugs me about improvements and I wish her the best in retirement. She certainly deserves a long and fruitful retirement.
Before we let you speak, I want to officially present the following. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city of Los Angeles City Council hereby commands and congratulates Hinda Rudd on her achievements and her 21 years of service to the city of Los Angeles and wish her great success in her retirement. Signed by all the members.
Thank you. Behind me are my staff, is my staff. And it's these people that are the ones that get you your records when you need them. It's a small staff, but we're very mighty. And they are, you owe them a great deal of respect for the work that they do. I'm disappointed that the council members aren't here because, or the remainder of them, because of the fact that we are outgrowing the city archives in Piper Technical Center. We are going to have to move them elsewhere. I understand that a museum is being set up. I'm not sure how much. I spoke with Ron Deaton and I told him I would like to be part of this committee since I am now going to be a citizen and not just a mere worker of the city. I want very much to move these archives to a place that's much more accessible. But one of the things I'd like to say to each and every one of you that are here, whether you realize it or not, you commit history every single day. And if you begin to realize that you are an important part of this whole foundation that is beautiful, dating back to 1827, we have every minute book and index since incorporation of 1850. And we have the Mexican minutes from 1832 to the American occupation in 1847. We have a tremendous legacy. I moved here from Salt Lake. I was astounded. I used to do displays in the rotunda. We're hoping to invent and implement that once again because your community here is very hungry for your history. This is not a law-law land. This is an incredible, incredible, great, grand, and noble society. I'm project director of a book that will be coming out in 2003. Before I retired, I wanted to make sure that the city archives was used to its ultimate. It's an anthology, a two-volume work on the city government from 1850 to 2000. It'll be a knockout. It'll be something that you can all use. It will be in libraries. It'll be a two-volume work. It will also be on CD-ROM. And it's something that you need to pay attention to. I want to thank you all for this great honor of being here, but also for the great honor to have served you as both the archivist and the records manager. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Spoken as a true historian, we appreciate that. Mr. Padilla?
Oh, one other thing.
One other thing, as I said.
For the record.
Historical footnote.
And for the record.
All right, for the record.
I am now available anytime I can be used, needed, wanted, to do whatever I can for the archival program. I will not let it die. It belongs to all of us. I've been the caretaker, but it's yours. And I want to do whatever I can to keep it going. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
Only, it's only appropriate that as she has been taking care of our records, that she go down in the history within our records with the resolution that has been adopted by the entire City Council. And you can display it with pride. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Members of the committee, the council, rather, I see no other resolutions to be presented today. That brings us to the point of adjournment. And if that is the case, I would ask that all persons in the council chamber please rise for adjourning motions. Mr. Zain for an adjourning motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. Request that we adjourn in memory of Harry Field. Harry Field was born in Hungary, lived in Chicago, Los Angeles, and Palm Springs. He owned a truck body business. Harry began playing golf at the age of 60, got his real estate license at the age of 80, and started learning the computer at the age of 90. He passed away at the age of 93. Harry was truly an amazing man with a kind heart and gentle soul. Harry is survived by his son, daughter, and two grandchildren. He was a resident of West Hills.
Thank you very much. Are there other adjourning motions? Mr. Holden?
As president, members, to say the names here as they all are. Horace H. Johnson. He was 83 years old at the time of his passing on October 12th. He retired from the postal service in 1974. He went on to become a Scott for UCLA and recruited some of the top athletes and for the school, including Rayford Johnson and others. Mr. Johnson belongs to the Alpha Phi fraternity and was active member of the Phillips Temple CMB Church where the services would be held. He's a guy that, whenever you called on him, while he was working at the post office or after, saying, hey, Horace, got to get the mail out. He knew the process, he knew the system, and he would follow it right through to the person's doorstep for you. And there was never a time when the mail got lost or transported to another community, especially at election time, when you wouldn't get the mail. And so, he would always be remembered by me and others, I'm sure. So we adjourn in memory of Mr. Horace Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Mr. Clerk, if you could add, Ned Perry and myself, we'd be appreciative. Anyone else at this point? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you. We are now adjourned. We wish you, on behalf of the City Council, a safe and blessed weekend.